Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meetings in order. This is the March 4th of 2019 Select Board Meetings of Town of Concord. We are being recorded and broadcast by Minuteman Media Network. When you address the board, please identify yourself. The first order of business is to elect an interim clerk. Mike Lawson is still recovering from surgery but doing well. And Alice is in parts unknown but having a wonderful time.[34.11][34.11](Laughter).[35.11][35.11](Laughter). We would have known if it was something else.
Absolutely.
But I'm ready to hear a motion.
I move to nominate Linda Espido to be the clerk.
And I would second that. All in favor?
Can I have more choice?[52.46][52.46](Laughter).
Exactly.
That's true.
Aye.
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 Yes. Okay. The consent agenda, the town accounting warrants, one-day special licenses. Judy Tuglia for March 15th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., 40 Westford Road, Wyandotte Mall. Xavier High School class of 1969, June 29th, 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., 246 Ornac. All alcohol license renewal. John Richardson, the Class II license, 17 Beltonet Street. The minutes for January 7th of 2019. And I think we... Right. So I will...
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. We're ready now for the time out of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Relative to last night's storm, it looks like we received about 12 to 14 inches of heavy wet snow. Schools canceled and town offices were delayed opening until 11 o'clock. Because cold weather is expected in the next few days, we are going to ask the crew tomorrow night to clean up the sidewalks and try to get the parking spaces open because I know snow's been on the ground for several weeks without having melted. And our budget was looking good until the last week.[142.22][142.22](Laughter). The board got a great response from Mass DOT on the weight restriction letter. Just two weeks ago, you sent the letter asking them to address the weight limitation in Culvert and near the State Police Force Farm.
This is on Route 2?
On Route 2. Because heavy vehicles were exiting Route 2 to go down Lozbrook Road to avoid the posted weight restrictions on that culvert within the Shoal Brook crosses Route 2. So they had removed the posting and there's no restrictions now on weight vehicles on Route 2. So that was a quick response to the board's letter. Fire Department responded on Sunday to a small pond at the end of Red Coat Lane where a gentleman in his 60s had been snow shoeing, went through the ice, and then was unable to get himself out. Firefighters Brendan Lyons and Chuck Hopkins responded. He was not responsive at the time when they got there, but he was transported to Emerson with very low core body temperature, but has made a recovery, is expected to do well.
That's, I think, shows that we've got to be careful this time of year when things can be... It looks either solid or it doesn't look as if you're crossing some water and you're going to fall in. So caution is advised.
Agreed. And we were sorry to hear about the passing of Marion Thornton last week. Marion was the 2008 Honored Citizen, widely known and loved for her work on protecting conservation land. She had great sense of humor and tremendous commitment to the land and played a key role in the community's efforts to protect Esther Brook Woods from development and a lot of other land conservation. So she'll be sort of missed. Town meeting, public hearings will resume tomorrow night with planning board's hearing on nine proposed zoning articles. And then the fifth and final public hearing will be next Monday, March 11th, on the town's enterprise fund operations. The Natural Resources Department will temporarily be relocating from the first floor of 141 Kaiser Road to the second floor for about 68 weeks while their office undergoes some renovations. And lastly, the Natural Resources staff are in the process of updating the trail map so that will now include the October Farm Riverfront property, the Baptist Brook over in the west side of town, and the wonderful Brewster's Wood gift of land from the Bubba's family to the Audubon Society. So those processes will all be added to the...
I think the ceremonies committee has announced that Diana Primer is going to be the Honored Citizen this year.
Wonderful, well-served.
Yeah. So that's good news. Any questions from anybody? Thank you. I'm just going to have one comment. There's been some confusion leading to concern regarding the stipulation for dismissal in the wrong determination action, the matter of Pamela Higgins versus the Town of Concord that was filed with the court on February 25th. The Concord Journal article presented the position of Ms. Higgins, it did not contain the town's position. During the weekend prior to the trial date, the town's insurance company negotiated an agreement to make a payment of $230,000 for a dismissal. Town manager and assistant town manager had no liability, and the town was responsible for its $5,000 deductible, which it would have paid whether the matter went to trial or not. There was no judgment of the court or acceptance of responsibility by the town. It was a judgment by the attorneys for our insurance carrier. Now, people need to understand, there's something like this if, when the town has a $5,000 deductible, whether we go to trial, whether we lose the case, whatever, the insurance company picks up the rest unless the town had refused to sign the dismissal. If we signed the... Refused to sign the dismissal, said we want to go to trial, in the event that the judgment would be over $230,000, the town would have been responsible for any of that amount. So it wasn't kind of a sense of relief that the settlement came, other than having to waste four or five days in Boston. But it was a settlement that was made with the decision of the insurance company, not necessarily pushed by the town. And I think the way the Concord Journal covered that, having it be kind of the major headlines and making it sound as if somehow the town was greatly at fault, was very misleading and unfortunate. I did want to clarify that. With that, we are ready to move to Item 5, 222-9 Main Street Advisory Committee update and membership update. Pam?
I am Pam Rockwell, 1810 Main Street, and I'm chairman of the 222-9 Main Street Oversight Committee. So in the past year, the water dioxide treatment facility has been built and is expected to start functioning this week. That's going to protect Acton's water supply from dioxide that's going under the river from the Star Med site. And the reason that's important to us is because it's a sign that, in fact, they're going to follow through and do this work. They could probably have made an argument for just continuing to pump and dump water into the Asbet River, but they are following through with the requirements that were based on risk, that were in the record of decision that was made several years ago. That's a good sign. We're all nervous about EPA, so that's a happy occurrence. There is a new EPA project manager, Chris Smith. He's a lot easier to reach than the last project manager who had only been there for about a year when she retired. So we're all pleased about that. The whole site cleanup is... Right now, there is a negotiation for a consent decree. Everyone has signed off on this right now except the Justice Department. So it's sitting in the Justice Department waiting for a signature. There have been times before when we have waited three years for a signature from the government, usually the Pentagon. Pentagon's already signed off at this point. So that could happen tomorrow, or it could happen in a year or two, or whenever. Once that signature happens, there's already about $18 million in the bank left over from the remedial investigation of feasibility study work. So work could begin immediately. There's no waiting for the money to move or anything like that to start the... Making the remediation plan. So about 18 months after the signature happens, that's when the remediation plan is going to be... That work plan is going to be pretty finalized. So if we want to have an impact on that, if we want to say, "This is where you grade this. This is where you take fill from to fill this piece in so it levels this area so we can build on it. This is where we'd prefer you to put the road or the paving that you're using for access for your machines." That's going to be 18 months from that signature. So that's when the clock starts, is when the signature happens, where we really want to put our input in. As we mentioned at town meeting last year, where we voted to actually take the property, the EPA has hired a contractor called SkiO from Vermont, and they are going to help us with our redevelopment planning. The project manager is Matt Robey and his assistant Haley Cannon... Maybe it's Cannon. They are working right now on a site reuse suitability map. So this would be... We had someone from the Affordable Housing Funding Committee actually walk around the site, and his questions were, "Well, how much space is here that I could actually build on?" And things like that. So there's about 46 acres there. Probably more than half of it is buildable because there's large swaths of it that are wetlands. There's a few areas where the old holding basin is, where you wouldn't be able to dig down to do anything. And you might not want to put a building there because if they had to fix the cap underneath, they'd have to remove the building. But you could still park dump trucks there or something like that. But there are a lot of sites, like right behind Minuteman Arc, there's a big sort of hill. And if you used that hill for clean fill in one of the other areas that's going to have to be excavated, then you would end up with a lot more flat space. And so there are a lot of things like that where it's, you know, here it's too steep to build and it goes down to a wetland, so you're not going to be able to fill that. But other places, you might be able to fill or flatten or... And where the buildings were and where the parking lots were are big swaths of open flat space where you could put buildings, you could put playing fields, you could put parking lots, you could put solar, all three, you know, all of those things. So they're going to work on a site suitability map right now so that those spaces will be basically designated as, "This is what could be done here. You could put buildings here. You could put..." Or, "You can't put buildings here." Or, "This has access to these, you know, roadways. This has access to..." Those kinds of things. They sent us a couple of examples of what they had done for other sites, and we have sent them off to Marcia Rasmussen and to Todd Kennedy from Affordable Housing... Did I get the name right? Todd Benjamin, sorry. From Affordable Housing. And I think they're going to be talking about some of the specifics. Once they get a draft of this suitability map done, they're going to talk with town staff and do a site walk and then come up with something that's more reasonable. And then that can be used by our local boards to think about, "Well, what would I like to put on this site? You know, is there some recreation thing I would like to put here? Is there some DPW workspace that I would like to put here? Do I want to park dump trucks there?" I'm personally kind of sad that we couldn't get this together 10 years ago, that they couldn't get it cleaned up 10 years ago so we could have our buses up there. But unfortunately, that's something that's already finished. And then after that...
Of course, it's off out of the barn.
Yeah. The goal was to sort of get this ready for after-town meeting, so...
So that's the timing, like...
That's the timing for this. But again, we want to make our decisions in town. It would be nice if we had something ready for town meeting next year of an idea of, "Well, which use would we like to use the Star Med site for?"
It sounds like the advisory committee, though, is pretty well in communication with the various parties of EPA.
Not so much. We're, you know, right now, everything's sort of in limbo. There was... The EPA person was actually on furlough during the shutdown, and we were all very nervous about that. But the SkiO contract and the contract for the actual site work, those contracts are coming out of the judgment fund, so they are not something that... Which is an Army thing that is already funded, that continues to be funded even when the EPA guy can't do the oversight he's supposed to be doing on it. So the money is there. Already some money, without even filing any paperwork, is there for the next part of the cleanup, so we don't really have to worry about money.
That's the 18 million?
That's the 18 million. It's going to be 100 and some million to do the whole site cleanup. But that's what's left over from the previous round of cleanup.
So you mentioned earlier that it... Waiting on the Justice Department signature?
Right.
Is that something that you would recommend, that we write a letter, that we support? Is there something we can do to...
I haven't heard that there's anything that we can do about that right now. So I would say, "Let's not." And as soon as that signature happens, we need to get our act together and decide what we're doing. So I think until we've got our act together about what we're doing, we don't need to push it either. The other thing that's happening is that I'm actually having some turnover in my committee. I've got three members of my committee at this point who have reason to leave. One is being called up to active duty in the Navy, and another one is retiring and moving to be closer to his grandchildren, and another one is just not able to continue on the committee. And so we're looking for new members at this point, in addition to looking for members for a redevelopment committee, so...
And what are the skills that they... That you'll be missing, you would be looking for?
I'm losing an attorney who was also a nuclear engineer.[965.82][965.82](Laughter). A nuclear physicist.[969.63][969.63](Laughter). And a risk assessor. So I'm losing three fairly good technical people. Two really good technical people and one sort of technical engineering kind of person. It would be nice to have at least one good engineer, environmental engineer or nuclear engineer in the group. And actually, at this point, environmental engineering is more important than nuclear engineering. We've gotten the testing done. We know what's there. We're not arguing anymore about where the uranium is. So we're arguing about the chemistry, so... But the other thing is starting to think about planning people. Thinking about what, you know, having somebody who can tell me what is useful to be regraded, what is a wide enough margin to get back into another site, whether... Those things are valuable, so... So the kind of engineer that might be an environmental engineer, maybe somebody who knows something about water flow underneath because that's the movement's underground. There's soils at the site that will have to be removed, dug up and removed at the site. But most of the holding basin and the deep stuff is really about protecting the water. And so making sure that what's there doesn't move or is removed, so...
And this certainly has been a long-term commitment on your part and that of your committee...
And I'm willing to be me up for another run, so...
And I know, you know, that this whole project has gone in fits and starts. And we're sort of in a holding pattern. You've already emphasized that, you know, once the signature comes in, we have 18 months before that plan is finalized, which is why you're... Even though that signature isn't here yet, you're anxious to have that site planning committee up and running so that we're in a position to influence that.
Right.
You said you've already reached out to Marcia and to Todd Benjamin.
Yeah.
So they're in the loop. I'm not sure... How did the Affordable Housing Funding Committee representative get involved in this at this point?
He called and asked for a site because he wanted to think about what could be done there. So he called and... Or he contacted me and said, "How can I get a site visit?" And I arranged that so that he could go visit the site and talk about that.
Okay. But Marcia's on board with this and...
I actually haven't talked to Marcia since she talked to SkiO, so I don't know quite where she is on that, but...
Okay. So I... At what point should that signature come down?
Mm-hmm.
You're likely to be the first one to know that at this point. I don't know if you would know that at the same time.
I don't know. I think they would send me an email to let me know if that's true. They would be excited to actually say that. But I'm not sure how...
So then you go in a mode of letting Chris know and letting us know?
I will pass around the information as well as I can, so...
Okay. Okay. So, and the town manager, you may have some reaction to this as well, but, you know, what is the carrot, I guess, if you will, to get people excited about joining this now? Even the... I'm thinking specifically about the site planning reuse committee. When we, you know, we've been in an elongated sort of holding period and we could be again, but we don't know?
So the town has a whole lot of needs. We have transportation needs. We have town building needs. We have recreation needs. We have affordable housing needs. We have all of these possibilities that could happen at this site. And the reality is, we're probably going to come up with two or three ideas that the town is going to pick from. And so the reason you might... A person might want to get involved in really doing this is because the thing they need will be one of those three things. At least, that's the way I kind of look at it. It's like, if you want some more recreation space, if you want some more housing space, if you want these things, then you should be stepping up and making sure that those are represented among the choices that the town has for that. So I think that's sort of the big carrot right now is because we're only going to be able to, in our brains, be able to think about so many things. And it's really hard to involve all of the public in that, so...
We should get somebody from the West Concord Advisory Committee involved, or they...
That would be great, so...
And how important, since one of your members was with US Navy?
Yeah.
Was he representing the US Navy on that committee?
No.
No. How important is it?
No, he kept getting called away to Afghanistan (laugh) by the US Navy.
So the direct link to one of the branches of the military is not as crucial as the expertise that that...
No. It's just that a lot of nuclear engineers are from the Navy, so...
Okay.
A lot of the people that actually work for the contractors are Navy, and a lot of people that do the transportation are former Army and Navy truck drivers, too. So that's... It's kind of cool to see the involvement, so...
Okay.
So is there any way, Andrew, that it would be something with the website that we can, if you will, alert people who need?
Yeah. Is that for... This is for both committees?
Yeah.
Yeah. We could work with the Public Information Office.
I would think that would probably be a good step.
Also, we should talk about who these three people are.
Right.
Clarify the current status of the members.
I've got a meeting tomorrow night, so I will try to...
Very helpful.
Okay.
So the current charge for the Site Planning Committee talks about the importance of coming back to the Select Board with a preliminary report by September, I think it is.
Okay.
And if you're anticipating some action at the next town meeting, or next year's town meeting, trying to keep with that schedule in the fall, I think would be important.
Sounds good.
Other comments or questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great update. Appreciate it. We are now ready to discuss the appointment of a middle school building committee. And I believe that Chris has included a Chapter 68 School Building Committee's representation. My thought is that this is something which we are going to want to have organized and in place and ideally kind of ready to go for shortly after town meeting so that we can... Won't be a delay in terms of selection. And I think the question is, there is, I know, a discussion with the town moderator regarding the issue of feasibility study versus a feasibility and sort of a planning portion of it, documentations and that type of thing. It strikes me that we want to kind of get the feasibility part done first, make sure we're all in agreement in terms of that, and then the drawings can come into place. But that the feasibility is really what is practical at what cost.
Are you asking a question or bringing up the inclusion of the design portion in a feasibility study or...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I think the design portion is in some ways step two, and we need to make sure we get kind of step one. It kind of... I've always been a little bit concerned with the notion that the figure of $90 million has kind of been an assumption. And the assumption is, I think, that sort of the plan is already... The feasibility study, in essence, has already, in essence, been done. We really are moving now towards more of the planning or the... Not architectural, but kind of the final stage. And I'm not sure if it's accepted exactly what the alternatives are.
So Chris, have we always had a... I assume we have. I just want to confirm. Have we always had a town building committee in advance of one of the schools being built?
So for the three elementary schools, yes. Those building committees were appointed by the Select Board. The regional high school was different. That was a different governmental entity, so they appointed them. But for the elementary, for the CPS buildings...
Which is why we're looking at a Willard example.
Right. And I don't know what people thought of the number of people on the committee. It struck me that there was a large number, and maybe that's the best thing, but I'm sort of, you know, open to discussion on that certainly.
I was struck with that as well, but I'm going to... Given the attention that's been given in conversations over the last couple of years about the town and school working more closely together and having a balance of input in terms of budgets and costs and all kinds of things, it may be necessary to have to have that a larger number rather than a smaller number. Right. We're really talking about the five community residents of large, right? If the rest... I mean, so many of the other positions. If we're just looking at the Willard plan, many of the other committee members are professionals within the school system and the town, you know, a good town manager, school committee, Select Board member, superintendent. I mean, again, it comes down to, really, if you take the committee members out, it's six people that we're talking about. And I suspect that this obviously comes into play after town meeting, assuming that the article has passed. And I don't know, at this point, one, why we would want to limit it. Why would we make that decision now when increasing, given the amount of discussion that's already gone on, the education that I think is being provided across the board about the state of our middle schools and the price point of a new building? Why would we want to limit participation?
I think the larger the committee, I think oftentimes the more difficult it is to accomplish.
I understand. Number four, I don't know. Yeah. I... How many... Does anybody remember how many were on the high school building committee, the regional high school? I'm sure there are people in the audience that do.
Do you remember?
I was like 18. I don't remember.
Yeah. I suppose I was going to say 18, yeah.
18, because it's huge.
Right.
Well, that seems more than...
Right. So, yeah, exactly. So I don't know that we're in a... I... And we have members from the school committee in the audience right now. I don't know what the opinion of anybody else is. And for us to simply decide, "Oh, I think six is too large, but four would be better." I don't know that that's true.
Well, I'm not sure if we... I mean, I guess the question is if we want to go ahead and agree that we're going to start forming this committee, the numbers become...
Well, I would not... Again, if we're using Willard as the... That's what's been presented here as the template. If this is the template, then I don't know why we would not include six others in that community. So I was already asked, after one of the hearings recently, was the town committee something new? So clearly, for this... For building? For potential, assuming the town meeting goes ahead and approves feasibility for the middle school. So I think some... To be able to state affirmatively that there will be a town...
So I think some, to be able to state affirmatively that there will be a town building committee, I think is important, in clarifying that. But whether we're setting that up before the town meeting somehow seems premature.
Before the course. And I certainly remember both had a bout, I don't know whether Joanna touched on this, but I also know that our superintendent has regular, I've heard it said in this room, that of course there will be a town building committee. So I don't know, it's probably just the length of time since the last one that was within Concord. Does this cause that kind of question?
Well, I am hesitant to kind of do too much without, we were missing two-
Right.
Select Board members, so I guess the sense here is that we will-
Have a town building committee.
Have a building committee, and that the, we can kind of draft up, I suppose, something for a proposal. But I think the next meeting, we will have the full board, so, in two weeks, yeah. Yeah, the next full meeting.
Is there an opportunity to talk with, if not Willard, one of the other school building representative or the chair or some of the other building committees in terms of lessons learned before we go ahead and put this charge together?
If there's any knowledge in the room, from the sitting school committee members or, Jane, can I have her, someone?
Yeah, go forward, please.
Thank you. Joanna Boynton, Chair of the Concord School Committee. I think the Willard project, and likewise this project, we anticipated following the MSBA-
Right.
-process, so that it was clear, and it's all on their website, how, you know, we, us collectively, the town would proceed. And I think that's how it happened with Willard. And that said, that there was a committee in place, should it be approved, so that, you know, time was efficiently used.
Yeah.
Again, that's just how it was in the past, and we have advocated for that. And likewise, when they say feasibility schematic design and some of the terminology, the process that they, we would, you know, would expect, you would follow the process that MSBA does, which also includes the feasibility through schematic designs, those aren't building plans, but-
I think the concern I'm hearing, number, is the price of admitting five, whereas most other feasibility studies have been maybe forty percent of that or less. And so there's sort of a concern somehow that that's a large amount for a study.
Uh huh.
And once we, there's a consensus in terms of what is to be built, then it seems to me, you know, you go ahead and spend the rest and get what you need.
I appreciate that. All I know is that some of those numbers, I don't have them because Jared got them, were from some other very recent projects, other business managers, so he tried to tie it to two or three other middle school projects. Certainly, the expectation would be to spend as little as possible, but always hoping to have the elbow room to get done what needs to be done. I would hope it would be less, certainly. Again, I think that they come from some recent projects, and we could probably get some more detail for you for that, if it's helpful.
Just out of curiosity, if the Willard School Building Committee came from the MSBA as well, was that-
The process, they followed the process, but we didn't have MSBA's funds support.
I understand, I understand that, I'm not, I'm not talking about who's funding it, I'm talking about the template, if you can.
Yeah.
Is there, so you're suggesting that we look at the template from the MSBA right now for the, for a town committee?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that's a possible way to frame what you're, I mean, the people that are on the committee, and again, I don't think you're on the committee, the board, the committee actually, and again, follows the process of MSBA, which goes through the town manager for every design option, any, you know, expenses, any, any costs, analysis, all that is gone through basically the town manager and the Select Board each step of the way. Again, it's outlined, and I think by MSBA, and I think Willard pretty much followed that outline. I wasn't on the committee, but that was my understanding.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I guess we're ready now to move on to take positions on the various warrant articles.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, are we gonna get back to this in two weeks?
Well, you say, yeah, well, I think what we probably want to do is to have a sort of a committee proposal for-
I can update this for, to reflect the MSBA process-
That'll be helpful.
And update, okay, great, thank you.
I don't know, let's see, I know the, the last time we reviewed the warrant articles, we took a vote on number ten, which was the Minuteman Regional Tech High School District Budget, and the amount that had been printed in the warrant at the time was $1,66,841. I believe you got an update, which you anticipated, you would mention. And so, do we need to kind of re-vote or do an amendment to it or what's the?
It'd be great if you revoked it, it's a higher amount.
And the figure is, the new figure is $1,73,368, which is $6,527, higher than the previous amount. So I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I move that we revoke the price of Article ten, the price contained in Article ten at the new total, which is $1,700, 73,368.
The firm of action.
The firm of action.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We then have item number twelve, which is the Concord Public School Capital Projects. And I think the last time we, I guess I'm not sure if we dealt with this, but the thinking was that it would be best to have the full board, there was some controversy with that, and that to have the full board present, and we might defer that until the next meeting.
Yes.
That's satisfactory. And that's also true of number fourteen, Concord Middle School Feasibility Study, and number sixteen, the Regional High School Capital Project.
So we're deferring these to what date? So like, I know that people in the audience-
The next meeting, well, the next full board meeting, it could be the eighteenth.
Eighteenth of March.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we have the Bylaw Amendment number nineteen, which is the general bylaw, town meeting notice, that would determine that we would delete the phrase in at least one public location of each precinct in Concord, and in certain place thereof, the phrase electronically on the town website, from the first sentence of the bylaw. The bylaw would read as listed in the article. I think this was a result of the special town meeting situation, when we were one day late and had to go through a number of hoops to get the legislature to okay actions that were taken. I don't know if we need any discussion on that, or?
That sounds like the housekeeping.
I think that was the intent.
Okay. I move that we take affirmative action on Article nineteen.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty has to do with the record management, to allow the town to amend the Record Management Bylaw by deleting the second paragraph and inserting the place the town manager still appointed municipal archivist. We shall report to the town clerk, and shall assist the town clerk in managing the town's records and archives, including complying with the Public Records Law and all other applicable laws. And so that it will read as listed in the article. Again, I think this is something that is somewhat of an updating on housekeeping. Questions or?
I move that we take, we vote to take affirmative action on Article twenty.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, next one is Article twenty-one, Authorization to Accept Mass General Law of Chapter Fifty-four, Section Sixteen-A, Election Vacancy Appointments, Determining Whether the Town Will Accept the Provisions of the Statute Authorizing the Town Clerk to File to Fill Vacant Election Officer's Position if an Election Officer is unexpectedly absent at the time the polls open for voting, or take any other actions thereof. Again, kind of housekeeping, and I think this is part of the governor's sort of updating of making municipal actions sort of simpler.
Makes sense to me. I move that we take affirmative action position on Article twenty-one.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-three is the Fund for Affordable Housing Development. And again, I think there, this was something where we felt that perhaps made sense to wait until the other two board members were present and full discussion on that.
I think that was a sense of what we talked about, yes.
So we will defer action on twenty-three. On twenty-four, the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund misses to set up, in essence, a depository for whatever funds would be used for affordable housing. I think there was a general acceptance of this by the other members, so that I'm not sure if we need to defer that.
I can't imagine, I mean, gonna need this-
Yeah.
To move forward on any of the other uses.
And I don't know if the town moderator sent a document that kind of went, put together by the State Housing, that explained how this would operate, what needs to be done, so I think there didn't seem to be anything controversial on that. Comfortable going forward with this?
I am, my only, I'm wondering if we should treat all four of these-
The same?
The same.
Take them all off until the eighteenth.
Right.
I have no problem with that, they are a package. My understanding is that the town moderator is considering putting all four together, and that will be likely to handle them the second night of town meeting. All four may be doing it out of order early in the meeting, so.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah. So we will defer those, which then completes that section, and I guess we are ready for public comments, if there are any. Look, my glasses on, I don't see any.
Oh, no.
Oh, there we go.
Hi, Julia Bell School, Park and Front Road. So I had hoped tonight to plow very quickly through all of the information that I had dumped out with you, but with Allison Mike not here, I'm rethinking that and hoping to come back later. I mean, they are neighbors, and I have been sort of respectful of their space and never spoken to them directly about the issue, but I am, of course, curious, bless you, about their, you know, stances, Select Board members, so I sort of have to take the members as we find them, bless you. So, but, yeah, exactly, and then we might lose Linda soon. So then, but I, if I could take a minute to give a pitch, because I didn't think I was gonna, because my neighbor had common, they had thought that maybe Article thirty was gonna be up for tomorrow, which I know has been canceled, because the Planning Board is having their public hearing, so that, so, could I-
In other words, our discussion of it.
Yes, yes. So I didn't think I was gonna be here, so I was gonna spend a minute just to give a short pitch on that, if that's okay? So Article thirty would be to expand the overlay district up at Middlesex. After the application was approved, you know, as a neighborhood, we decided, okay, what are our options? We have the lawsuit, which we went forward to, and then to expand the back of the property. So we did file the initiative petition, as you may remember from last town meeting, which, again, I readily admit, it's, it's not an easy issue to process, and citing sort of process issues, the Planning Board did not support it. But for this session, there was plenty of time, so we went back to them, and they have sponsored the article this town meeting. So Article thirty is on their list. So, we're hoping that that makes it less confusing, but it's still a little bit confusing in the sense that by including this in wireless district, it's not making Middlesex move it to that piece, it's opening it up as an option for citing. So, you know, and just in terms of when you all have sort of been looking around town center, most of the sites that you're looking at are outside of the overlay district, they're not in it. So, but in terms of the application that was on Middlesex, Middlesex refused to look at anything that was outside the overlay. So it was a very sort of different look at the bylaws and the case law. So they just disregarded anything in the back of their property. So what is good about the back of their property, if you, you know, if you remember, it's all Estorbrook Woods back there. However, ten years ago, they clear-cut acres to build their athletic fields. So after that, bruhaha, it's now a very large, open area, and the elevation is much higher. And also, you know, from the map that the town planner put together, like, this white area here, no bylaw, bylaws needed to be waived at all. So I think Middlesex probably owns the only property in all of the town where you could cite its own tower with no bylaw waivers, except they refused to look at it. So this is sort of our point to them, that you own 350 acres, you refuse to look at it, putting the tower on your poor campus, which, what does that mean? You're forcing it out onto the neighbors, because you're putting it on the outskirts, which is what they did, is why it's the closest to us. So if they could put it, you know, explore the back of the property, really take a hard look at it, you couldn't see it from Lower Road, you wouldn't see it from Our Road, and it would be higher, so that hopefully, at such a high elevation, it doesn't need to be 120 foot tall. We will, we will say it doesn't need to be 120 foot now, but at least that it can be looked at. So that's the pitch for Article thirty, is there any questions?
I thought I saw somewhere on mail saying that there was an issue as to whether Middlesex had noticed, is that clarified at all, or?
Noticed on-
The article.
Since we didn't sponsor it this, I certainly did notify them when we sponsored it, I, if honestly, if that is part of this, this is gonna be extremely frustrating, because-
I don't know that it is, I thought I could say it was-
You know, I-
It was.
How, but again, you know, we were-
They weren't aware of what's going on.
Yeah, that's the thing, I mean, so they threw process in last time to say, and honestly, I've gone to all the meetings, not one person has shown up at one of them, except me. So, you know, so citing process last time, and doubt they're gonna cite process this time, I mean, I, I'm not surprised.
And they are getting a new head of school?
They are getting a new head of school, so hopefully that will be announced, too, with some new, you know, new eyes and new blood on this issue. We will remain hopeful for that. But, you know, the lawsuit continues, and again, just the idea that, to be honest, they shouldn't have been able to eliminate this land from their site review to begin with, but now at least it will get rid of that argument that they would be allowed to do that, so. But let me, you know, please let me know if that's what the new, the new reason to disregard this, it has gone through the- reason to disregard this. It has gone through the process, just like they said, they, you know, that they wouldn't support last time. So.
Well, I had to say, I think the planning board, the fact that they're sponsoring this, makes it be different.
Right, right. Middlesex is not going to support it. But again, that is not their decision to make, it is the town. So anyway, so thank you very much.
Anybody else have a comment? We're ready then, I guess, for liaison.
I think I'm going to pass. I'm sure I'm going to be comfortable with you, but.
I know. I went to the Commission on Disabilities. They are looking for, I think, at least one and actually sort of two, if one person stayed on because she hasn't been replaced, but would like to get off. And they were basically, there are a number of the items that they had been dealing with before. There was some discussion of what their plans are sort of in the coming year, as well as what to do with, they do get some funding from the Fund for Handicap Parking and weather and how to spend those funds. So it's sort of a general discussion on that. It's been very helpful, I think, to have the Council on Agey representative there, because there's a lot of combination of efforts and what can be done that make it more efficient. So they seem to be moving along well.
I attended the NRC, the Districts Commission and the PACC Access Committee. And I'll start with the PAC, P-A-C-C, for Minuteman Media. That was a fairly routine. We routinely start rating and get stuck on time. We spent a good deal of time going over our meeting minutes and focusing on upcoming meetings, briefly discussed the budget and the warrant article view. And then Erin updated us on the Minuteman Media Network. We did not, we also spent a good deal of time talking about the upcoming survey and the questions that were going to be used for that. And I think that's going to be a really, I'm hoping to see really useful data come out of that. And I think that's going to be exciting. The committee has a lot of great enthusiasm and interest in terms of opportunities coming, you know, in the future. And I think it's, sometimes we get stuck in the routine versus the excitement about new programming, new, you know, what does the town want? And I think that's where we're moving, and I think that's exciting. In terms of the NRC, it was a fairly standard meeting. It's quite a time for the NRC. We don't have any warrant articles up this year. I will say that one interesting point I wanted to bring up was the discussion of the Barrett Mill Farm High Tunnel, which I had never understood. It's high tunnels, they need an approval because it's the Barrett Mill historic district. I always assumed that they were temporary greenhouses, but they are the, they look somewhat like a, like a temporary greenhouse, but they're not, there's no flooring structure, and they're put in place for things like, right, things to ma, you know, things that might need to grow our vines and other, other crops. They're not intended to keep anything over winter. They are temporary structures. So that was, I learned a little bit of farming. And the NRC obviously moved that forward. At the HGC, we discussed the handicap entrance to 55 Turge Street, cloud what that's going forward. And, or making sure that the entrance to 55 Turge Street is better for handicapped access. And then there was continued discussion up several through Monument Street, where there is a very creative solution being discussed to adding a garage, demolishing a freestanding garage and including a new garage and expanding a side of a home. The most interesting part was the kind of garage doors that they are proposing, which would be taken from sort of the use of an airplane hangar. They move up and then they collapse, all because of the space and the restrictions on, on this building. It's a lot of creative architecture, very interesting. So with that, I've shared more than anyone needs to know, I'm sure, except those whose projects these are. And.
Great. We're now ready for miscellaneous correspondence. I will just announce, I got a very nice email from the young lady who was Concord Academy President, presenter, Audrey Ling, thanking us for having, allowing them to come and for signing their petition.
I actually got several community members reached out to me to say, thank you for doing that.
It was, it was a nice event. And they were great, they're very enthusiastic. We did get a letter regarding TD Bank complained about their lighting. And I believe they're at a point now of being fine. If anybody does business at TD Bank, you might suggest that they comply with the regulations in lighting.
I know that's been a very longstanding sore point.
Yeah. We don't like longstanding sore points, so. And the last was a follow-up to a question at the Affordable Housing Public Hearing as to how, whether the application of Grantham for Junction Village is their second or third. And it was clarified that it was their second. So just, I think it's worth that when points get raised, we don't have the answer, we do try to follow up and get the answer. So I guess we're now ready for appointments.
Okay. These are to confirm some town manager appointments. I move to confirm town manager presence of William Haren of 214 Beerspring Road to the Board Assessor for a term to expire May 31, 2021, effective April 1, 2019. Chris Van Dyke of 344 Barrett Mill Road to the Haywood Meadow Stewardship Committee, for a term to expire May 31, 2022.
Second?
So we don't need to second?
No, we do.
This is an appointment, you're okay, second?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye. And I move, these are to committee appointments, I move to appoint Michelle Wiggins of 138 Partridge Lane to the Conservation Restrictions Stewardship Committee, for a term to expire May 31, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I think Mike was disappointed he's not here, because we're ready to adjourn. I think we're probably close to a record.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.